All right. Well, we are back from our recess and at this point in time, we are moving into the non-action items.
Nope, still have.
Oh, my bad. We have one more action item that councilman Les are added to the agenda.
We have one more step related to this particular item, and that deals with the operating shortfall.
Okay, so city manager proceed.
Thank you, Mayor. So the last item, as the staff went through and ran the numbers related to this, as it relates to the shortfall that we would have in our operational budget based off the changes, a lot of it having to do with funding related to our internal service fees. We ended up with the numbers that Jessica provided, which was in the memo today. You've seen the number before. We're looking at about $228,000. Two twenty-eight, seven sixty-three is what's written on paper. That would be a shortfall for the operating, and we have to figure out as a council how we want to fund that. In the discussions that staff had with you, Jessica and Lisa, they talked about a couple of different options. The possibility of increasing the mill levy, looking at changes to the operating budget that and discussions, it ended up being the predominant thought was that we should be looking at making changes to the operating budget in order to be able to cover those expenses over the life of 2021. And so that was the predominant discussion, and so we need a motion basically to decide that that is the course of, if that is indeed how you feel, but that's the course of action that you want to take going forward with this. And then obviously, when you get to 2022, there'll be a cost that's associated with the agreement, and then you'll be able to decide each year how you want to handle that. But as right now, where we're looking at 2021, that's not got as much flexibility. It would require some reductions in other areas in order to make sure and cover that funding gap of 228,000. So with that, I'll let you run the conversation, Mayor.
So, oh, Mayor, okay, sorry. So if we had been having this same conversation of this gap, when we did the 21 budget, it'd be a different conversation because we'd have the ability to look at the budget long term and make those adjustments. Obviously, we're in December. We start that budget next year, and we're sort of at that point. So I feel like this discussion is different than we will have and would have had during the budget process. And because of that, and I sent an email out earlier today, I think we have, I think it's a two-step process for us. I think it's how do we get through 2021? And then I think as we enter the 2022 budget process, we can look at the long-term moving part going forward. Which is why I did throw out today, I did throw out the idea of using our other revenues, but then we got the memo today that we may end up the year with a $700,000 plus surplus. And I think that there are options there to use those other revenues, whether it's the surplus, whether it's our, our other fund to do that, whether it's our reserve fund to do that for one year. Because of that amount, I think that the departments that we would have to cut from have already been hit because of COVID cuts that we had to make in this last budget. I don't know that it's fair to make those cuts to them if we don't have to for one year at this time. And I also think we have other factors that we're going to know in five to six months that we don't have today. And I think those include, we don't know what next year's going to look like, whether COVID gets better or worse in the early part of next year, and what revenues mean. As we get a vaccine across the country, we're going to know come February what the timeline of that is for our area and what that impact's going to be. Congress is going to do something. We're not exactly sure what, and we are going to see some revenue probably hopefully trickle down to us. We can't guarantee that, but we're going to know that. So my recommendation, I guess, whether it, I won't make it a motion quite yet because I don't know if people want to, I don't want to talk about the surplus as opposed to the actual reserves, if that makes people feel better to sort of commit some surplus dollars early. I'm happy to have that conversation, but those would be my recommendations that don't involve cuts to the 21 budget, which is pretty much all already set. And then lets us start the discussion long term when we craft the 2022 budget. So thank you.
Responses, comments, questions from Councilman Duncan's proposal. Councilwoman Hiller.
Well, I think that's certainly something to consider. My concern, and I touched on it in the last discussion, is that in Jessica's memo from today, and we've talked about it before, but besides the cash shortfall that's either 228,000 or this one says 235, we have the issue of $479,000 that the zoo's budget used has, has, has in recent years contributed to the city's operating budget. When you look through the numbers that are there, they've kind of calculated that maybe 106,000 of that can actually be dropped off. That it's, it's expenses that, that the zoo will cover for themselves. But if I'm reading this right, you know, on table three, on page three, we have the, the true funding gap is not only the 235 or 228,000 in operating costs, but we cannot ignore that shortfall of 479,000. And so it shows, it demonstrates a shortfall of 713, 765. If that's offset by this 106,000 that staff has documented that we could save, we are still roughly at $600,000, not just 228, in the net cost to the city's budget. Is that correct?
Jessica.
Um, I think that the 479 is the internal service fee costs that we started from. Facilities reviewed past performance, and they believe that they can eliminate the 106,000 directly from that 479, and then there's the smaller overhead costs of 7,000. So you're on table three, the remaining internal service cost is 373,000. If you continue down to table four, you'll see the agreement gap, which is just the operating portion of that management fee, actually saves the city, not including capital maintenance, so not the, not the portion that we just discussed. Actually saves the city $144,000. So if you net the 144,000 against the 373,000, the actual funding gap for 2021 would be the 228,763 dollars is our current, is our estimate.
Okay, then I wasn't able to make that jump, and if you could help me, I mean, where do we make up the money for the internal funding that the zoo's budget was contributing before? Where does that money come from?
Sure. So in table three, the $479,000 internal service fee allocation reflects a little over $83,000 for IT services. There's about 3,000, a little over 3,000 for intel time costs, which is our, our clock system for employees to clock in and out and other items that would be eliminated. Another portion of that, the other 3,000 is related to our, our our agreement with FOTS that after a certain level of performance, I believe with ticket revenue, they receive an extra piece. So that's, so obviously that we wouldn't continue to pay them if we're no longer managing the zoo. The insurance costs are there, almost 80,000, and then facilities fees of 285,000, and that's for the cost of the facilities department maintaining facilities, buying supplies for the zoo. And then the fleet, the $1,000, I believe that is for the fleet reserve program, and then the 22,000 is the cost associated with the fleet fund maintaining the zoo's fleet. So that's totaled, and then we believe in talking to the various departments in 2021, the 7100 will be eliminated, so that's intel time, and then the agreement with FOTS. So that's eliminated. And then Hannah's team went back and looked at prior expenses, what they ended up paying for particular supplies, contracts that they currently have, like for janitorial services, that would be eliminated. The city would no longer need to purchase those. So that's what's made up in the $98,820, and Hannah is on if there is additional questions regarding that. So with the costs elimination that have been identified that would happen immediately, or at least the estimate of it, we would anticipate the remaining internal service cost to be 373,186 dollars. So if you take that amount and you net it against the savings to the city's general fund based on what we had budgeted to spend versus what the management agreement is, net of the the two revenue sources that are included in table one, the remaining cost in the general fund, we estimate to be 228,763 dollars. So what makes that 479,000, how we've been able to address that gap is
Jessica, pardon the interruption, but I have that spreadsheet, and it was great to work with, but we're talking about numbers and the public cannot see them. Could you share your screen and show that so that the people at home are able to follow along with us?
Um, I can try. I'm, I'm not on my, I'm on different devices. So give me one minute, and I will figure it out. I, sorry, I see Steve. Steve, you have the memo. Would you be able to share the memo for me?
Yeah, I'll pull it up.
Thank you. So while he's pulling it up, basically, we took the internal service fee allocation that was in the 2021 budget. We eliminated all costs that we knew we could eliminate off the top that were for like supplies and, and other items unrelated to like personnel. And then the, the savings that's achieved by the maintenance agreement of 144,000 that those two items together just net against the 479. Steve, if you could maybe go to page four. There we go. Okay, so this is showing the internal service fees. The halfway down the chart, you can see the total internal service fee allocation is the 479,000. And then we highlight the, the costs that we're able to eliminate. And so the remaining internal service fee cost is the 373,000. So that, if, if the management fee was without capital, was more than what the city had budgeted on a net basis, then the 373,000 cost would be the same. It would be that. However, the management fee is lower than the net cost to the city in the 2021 budget, the portion of the budget that's allocated to the zoo. So Steve, if you can go to page five.
Can you see five?
No, I see four still. Or maybe page four is just really important. Okay, page five. So now we see the, the $144,000 positive to the city's budget from the agreement, and you can track that, I believe, on table one. And then that 373,000 is from table three, and so when we add those together, the remaining cost to the city's operating budget without regard to the capital maintenance portion is 228,000.
I'm, I'm sorry, and if it's just me, that's okay, but when you're on page three, and we have a funding gap of 235,000 shortfall that's laid out at the top, and then we have an internal service fee shortfall of 479, those are both costs to the city that we would not recoup, and all I saw was the offset, you know, to get the, the 373.
So on table two, the portion highlighted, and that's on page three, the portion highlighted on the left-hand side in orange, it's an oranges color, that shows the current adopted 2021 budget. So the city receives, or at least is budgeted, will unlikely meet this in the 2021 year, but has budgeted $785,000 of revenue from zoo operations. In addition, we allocate the, a portion of the TGT revenue that the city receives for zoo operations. The 2021 budget reflects 221,765 dollars. Again, it's unlikely that we would meet that target in 2021. So the total revenue is a little over 1 million. We net that against the, the portion of the expense side of the general funds budget allocated to the zoo, and so that's 2.68 million. So the total cost to the city's general fund outside of revenue generated specifically at the zoo. So this would be sales tax, property tax levy, any other, any other revenue source within the general fund would have to, to pay for this. So the city on a net basis basically has 1.68 million that we have to overcome in the management agree, agreement or the cost-saving measures that we're discussing to be on a positive side when we're comparing the two options. So then in the blue area, this is the expense cost that remain with the city if we go through a P3. The operating and maintenance management fee that FOTS has requested, and this is just for operations, is that 1.837 million. Okay, the capital maintenance fee portion is 380,000. So a total cost to the city in 2021 would be the 2.2 million. Now, we, in, in our discussions and how the, the previous governing bodies have approved the use of TGT funding, we would net the, the portion of TGT that that they had, that they would originally be allocated to to begin with, that 221,000, we've netted it against their management fee because we would be paying that to them. In addition, based on a variety of legal reasons, which Lisa is more than welcome to jump in here, FOTS has budgeted for and will pay the city the same amount of costs associated with insurance. The 2021 budget assumes $80,000 of insurance fee. So the annual cost to the city in the PPP model is that 1.9 million. However, which would obviously be the, the negative 235,000. However, based on the previous discussion we just had, the $380,000 for capital maintenance will not be funded out of operations, at least in the year 2021. So if you take the negative 235,000 and you add back in 380,000, you get the, I think the was the 144, yeah, 144,000, that's represented in table four. And so, so the funding app is at 235, and then the remaining internal service fees we just discussed. And so we have on a net basis a funding gap of 228,000 dollars, given the, the operating savings, not including capital that we will receive on the, in the general fund, moving forward with this P3, offset against the remaining internal service fee costs that the city will continue to have to pay.
Maybe I, maybe the catch for me is, isn't, isn't the 479,000 part of the 2.687 million in expenses from the
Yes.
So I guess where I'm caught, and again, correct me if I just can't make it through the hoop, is that if we're going to give them the equivalent amount of money that was in the budget, but we are going to have a corresponding shortfall that we have to make up because their budget is not contributing that back to our departments. We're not going to lay off those employees in HR and legal and finance and so on. And so that, that money is, is in great part going to so that we've got to make up, we, we can't give that same amount of money to them, and then if we have to make it up, we're paying it twice. Is that right?
I, I'm not, I'm not sure what you mean by, I apologize. I'm not following your, the paying it twice.
If we are giving, if they, if they used to, if they, if in 2020, they're giving, they're paying out of their budget of 2.6 million, 479,000 back into various other departments to pay for services. But there, and we're going to continue giving them money at the equivalent of that 479, but we're going to have a substantial amount of that that we're going to have to make up because that money from their department is not going in to fund the, the departments of those services. Whether it's HR, legal, or whatever all those internal fees are, and maybe I'm missing two things.
Sure, they don't pay for HR and legal. That's not a cost allocation here. The only cost allocation is facilities, IT, fleet, and the, those smaller ones. Maybe what is, is throwing the discussion is that if you're on table two, the total funding gap that you're seeing is 714,000. Now that's made up in that presentation of the 479,000 internal service fees, but it's also made up of the 300, it includes the $380,000 of capital maintenance costs. So there is a savings, if you just look at the operating management fee just for operations, and you put it against the, the total cost to the city. And that's where you get the 235, but if you take 235 and you subtract out 380,000, it's, that's, that's, I don't, I, that's the cost. And if you look down, it, the, the reason we laid out the, the memo in this way is trying to give you the global understanding of what the operating budget was for the, or for the zoo, what it would be in the blue section if we moved forward with a P3, and the yellow section is showing what that gap is. And so as we go along in the memo, we address different aspects of it, right? So in the second portion in the discussion we just had, the $380,000 is reflected in table two because prior to this evening, we hadn't received official guidance on how to address that cost. But based on the feedback that we just received, you would take the 714,000 and you would subtract 380,000 dollars from it because we know how we're addressing that, and we're not addressing it at least in 2021 through the city's general fund. Now, on the 479,000 for internal service costs, that is in the city's budget, that is in the, the zoo's 2021 budget. However, uh, facilities has been able to identify costs that they believe will be eliminated. And if you combine, if you take that out, that's where you get to the lower internal service fee that will remain. That's the 373,000.
Councilwoman Lesser.
I think though, am I correct though, also though, because of how we were moving forward with this project and expectations and stuff, we do not have, we do not have any capital maintenance money in the budget for this year, correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
So in essence, from a saving standpoint, where we've plugged in for enter the PPP, it's still going to cost us 380. The information that I pulled up and looked is, over the last five years, we've spent 600, 800,000 in capital maintenance. Would that be a fair average?
That is the, the figure that has been shared with me.
So if that's the case, then it, just call it three, call it 400, call it 600, 650, we're, we're 250,000 dollars ahead or savings there versus not, not going this way. That's not really reflective on this, correct?
From a capital maintenance standpoint, I, I, I think I follow what you're saying, and that would be correct.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, did that provide you the clarity you needed?
I'm still working on it, but I'm closer. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Lemon Dola? Councilwoman Dola.
Thank you. So refresh my memory on the gap. It's 200 and how much?
220, 228,763 dollars in 2021.
How much is our total 2021 general fund budget?
96 million, I want to say.
So out of 96 million dollars, do you think you can find 221,000?
By finding it, if you mean, can we lower other expenses? Sure. If the guidance from the governing body today is to reduce expenses in other areas of the general fund, we will certainly meet that target.
And then you'll be able to find it.
Due to other reductions, yes.
Thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
Well, and I would agree with that too. I just was looking at, i- if we are fairly confident that we will have a surplus that, that's looking at 700,000 or so dollars. If we're comfortable at this time of, of just designating now that the first 228,000 of that go to this gap for 2021, which allows us then to take a long-term look at it for the 2022 budget, then, then I guess that would be my motion at this time, and then if that, for some reason, that surplus dries up between now and the, and we, and we have to come back and, and look at that, I, I guess we can do that. But that seems the, that seems the simplest and less burdensome to our employees and staff solution is particularly, I, I am cognizant of the fact that we have made some cuts due to COVID, and they've been substantial. And so if we, if we've got some money coming in that we can use for this, since this timing is off, I mean, I think we all agree, this timing is just not ideal. It's, it's working out, but it, we, we could have timed this better with those budget talks. We would have, but we can't, and I can't go back and I can't fast forward. So, so I guess that would be my, my motion at this time is to go ahead and just designate those funds now and, and solve this problem and move on.
Jessica, is there any response that you would like to provide the councilman on that?
I think that using the projected surplus for the first year is a reasonable option, given the current projections. What I will say is that the, the commitment to a 15-year agreement, we're, we are committing to paying that regardless of what our other spending or revenue options are for the next 15 years. So while in the short term, I think that that is a, is an option. 2022, we are in the budget development process. So I know that while 20, 228,000 dollars may not seem significant, we will be going through a similar process that we did in 2021 in terms of the structural gap between revenues meeting expense. So these things all, you know, obviously build on each other. I know you all know that. And so while 2021, yeah, I think that, that that's a good option. 2022, 2023, 2024, whatever cuts we were to make in 21, we would have to make those every year. If we are going to use reserves in 2021 for this, we haven't eliminated the 22 issue, right? That's a one-time source of revenue for an ongoing commitment.
Any other questions? Councilwoman Hiller.
Regarding the motion, there's a chart on page two that indicates, it calculates a regular increase in the subsidy. it calculates a regular increase in the subsidy. And if there is an assumption that, I guess the question would be whether, whatever this motion is that's coming through, whether it's also endorsing the annual increase in the subsidy fee. I would note that it goes up 500,000 a year by the end of the 15 years. It's pretty substantial. So just a question.
The, so the, the table one that the councilwoman is referring to is on page two of the memo. Those figures were included in the Fats' proposal and request for what they need to operate the zoo in a way that's supportive of the vision they've outlined.
It's just, this body needs to, you know, address that, I guess. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, looks like that's what you were saying. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I guess two things. First of all, I haven't had time to punch you, so I'm going to do the math, but I think, you know, property values have been going between 2 and 3% a year. I don't know if that will happen in perpetuity, it seems like it has for me, but I wonder if that will, if that will cover this increase. It may not, but that's something I guess we'd want to look at. I forgot the other thing I was going to say, but, oh, and I will second Councilman Duncan's motion. That's it.
And, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Lemon Dola.
The, so we did go back and look at the assessed value that the levy is based off of, going back to 2008, and that would be the most recent Great Recession. And in the five years following, four of those years saw a decrease in assessed value. And then since then, two years have seen a decrease in assessed value. Overall, we, you're right, we have seen significant growth. But depending on how deep the current economic environment is, and based on sales tax, quite frankly, we're, we're still seeing people spending. But just wanted to point that out, that we have gone through periods of assessed value decline if you look at the portion that the actual levy is based off of.
Okay, so we have the suggestion that Councilman Duncan presented with regards to us using the windfall that was presented today or us finding it. If I'm saying it right, Councilman Duncan, is this your time to speak or forever hold your?
I had a motion and a second, so I guess.
Okay.
On the floor, so I mean, I guess we're there. I mean, I would just reiterate, staff clearly needs some direction. And while there are times I am happy to go back and look at staff and say, figure it out, I think this is one of those times where we need to, they're asking for some help and I'm trying to provide it as opposed to just saying, you know, we get that there's a deficit, go figure it out. And I think they did that already through COVID to the tune of 5 million dollars, and then some. And so I, I am well aware of the future problems, and I'm not discounting those, and I'm not trying to kick the can down the road. And like I said, I think this is a much different discussion in a few months as we look at the budget and how we balance that out. But the problem is, we've all said to a person, for the most part, with the exception of one or two, that we think this is the direction we want to go. And we are at a point where staff is ready to negotiate a contract that then is going to take us some time to sit down, pick apart, analyze, and figure out if it's the deal we all want to make. But we can't do that without some of these decisions. And so I'm trying to at least get us to a point where they can move that process forward. We can fill the immediate problem with a very clear understanding that we have a long-term problem to fix in the coming months that this poses.
Further comments or questions? We have a motion and we have a second. We proceed with the vote.
Mayor DeLausser?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Aquilat?
No.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes, Ms. Valdivia Aquilat voting no, the motion carries.
All right, we now move on to the next item, if the clerk would read.
Okay, the next item was the item that Councilmember Lesser added to the agenda. So approval to extend the parking time limit in the Central Business District between the 400 block and 1200 block of Kansas Avenue, including all side streets from two hours to four hours until January 3, 2021, at 11:59.
Councilwoman Lesser.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, real, real quick, just to move through this, this is basically just an effort to assist the downtown businesses that have been decimated by a lot of remote employees and restaurants, retail are not seeing the traffic down there. This is just an opportunity to assist them during the holiday season for downtown to be a little bit more of a destination in regards to a group being able to go have dinner, drinks, walk around, shop at the various local establishments down there. And that's pretty much it. An effort to make it easier for businesses downtown as well as for shoppers and citizens to have a little more time, especially since the parking is not as it is due to the COVID.
Any questions for Councilman Lesser? Councilwoman Hiller to be followed by Councilwoman Ortiz.
My question would be whether this was in consultation with the merchants themselves or DTI. I see Hannah's online. Not so much worried about the money as the issue that we work really hard on over the last couple of years, that it's important to have that time limit so that there is turnover, so that people do come and go to the restaurants and shop because they, they see the, the turnover and park, the parking available. So I just didn't know if you consulted with anyone about this.
I consulted with four businesses down there, received multiple calls from constituents, as well as had conversations with Mr. Pravarnik and Mr. Fry.
Okay, and what was their reaction?
All, they were all in support of the, the change.
Okay, and if, if we could ask Hannah from the parking professional perspective, whether they were consulted and have any opinion?
I was not directly consulted by Councilman Lesser, however, I have talked to City Manager Trout about it. It's not a material financial concern in terms of the availability for people to come down and enjoy. We're definitely in support of helping our businesses downtown in such efforts that we've done with some of the curbside, you know, efforts with our restaurants down there to offer that free of charge. I do want to point out that, you know, night and weekends continue to be free, so that has not changed, and that's not something that we have done. But if that is the direction of this body, we can update our systems to enforce on a four-hour time limit versus a two as it's currently configured.
As well as to answer your question, as finishing answering your question as well, Councilman Hiller, that was also the thought of four hours versus conversations that I did have in regards to just waiving it entirely for that time period because I think we, we, we do still want to eliminate the abuse of people who, you know, quite frankly, go down, who work downtown, who go and park and, and leave it there for eight hours. We don't want that happening either because that's counterproductive to what we're trying to, to accomplish. But at the same time, if you just do, just do the math of going out with four of your girlfriends and going and having dinner and, and, and maybe some drinks, and then want to walk to Hazel Hill and to Ash Boutique and to the different places and what have you, you're going to be pressed to be able to do that in four hours without having to get out and move your car.
Just, just to clarify, there's no cost on the evenings or weekends anyway. So all we're talking about is extending from two to four hours during the day on weekdays with this proposal? Because it, it's already unlimited in the evening and weekends? Okay.
If I may, Councilwoman Hiller, yes, that is correct. It's already free of charge, night and weekends, on street parking.
Okay, so were you aware of that, Mike? I'm just trying to figure it out because I didn't know anything about it.
Yeah, I can read.
Okay, well, you were talking about evening dinner and so on, and that it's not an issue for evening, so. It'll work, I just, I know, I know we've talked about turnover and that that's really important for the merchants. And so Hannah has really led that conversation, so.
Well, Hannah can speak, you know, I, I, like I told you, I talked to, I talked to Cody, I talked to, to Mike Fox, I talked to, I talked to various, this is what they want, so. Ben Frye, you know, I, I don't know what to tell you on that.
Okay.
I can tell you that if, I mean, I don't know, I can tell you when the story went out on, on, on WIVW that I, I got 20 calls, and I got in favor of it, I got zero calls against it, so, for whatever that's worth.
Yeah, I've been kind of living it for four years, and so I'm just checking.
Other questions or comments for Councilman Lesser? Seeing none, Councilwoman Ortiz, forgive me, I was just, I'm in love watching a little baby here. Chief, Chief Baby is here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This question, I guess, is for Hannah. I was kind of shocked when Mike brought this proposal to the table. We used to have free parking for Christmas to the merchants, what, what happened to that?
Councilwoman Ortiz, I will apologize. I have not been around in time that we have had that. I can definitely go back with my team and ask about some of the history and what's potentially changed with the Christmas holidays over the year. Since I have been with parking, the conversation has been predominantly with the downtown merchants regarding turnover on Kansas Avenue for concerns of staff and/or residents, parking in front of businesses, restricting access for other customers during that timeframe, but it hasn't necessarily gone to completely free as they've had a huge, it was pre-COVID for a lot of the conversations, a huge emphasis on enforcement. So rolling out technologies such as license plate reading for enforcement officers, those sorts of engagements have been a top priority for our downtown constituents.
Well, I know at one time, they, and then, and then they kind of done away with. But that, that's, that's the only thing that I would like to know is when, when that stopped. They, you know, it was just in the month of December, well, actually from Thanksgiving to December, Christmas, so they would just try to encourage people, and I thought that was a great way to do that. So if you could find out when that stopped, that would be great. Mike, I, I think this is great. I, I can understand four hours, but I don't have four buddies, so I don't, I don't have that parking problem. Thank you.
Councilman Duncan.
I just want to second the motion.
Thank you very much. Additional comments or questions? If not, we proceed by voting.
Mayor DeLausser?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Aquilat?
Yes.
Ortiz?
For number nine, yes.
Emerson?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser.
Yes, and Sylvia, I already, you haven't responded to me asking you to go to lunch, so I know you at least got one friend.
We have 10 yes, the motion carries.
All right, we now move on into the non-action items, if the clerk would read.
Days discussion regarding the imposition of a citywide curfew.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this item I bring before the governing body. It was something that I identified in my capacity as city manager that, and asked some language to be developed by this legal department to be able to move forward the idea and concept of including language in our city code that would allow us to do a curfew at the time we might need it. The mayor was not involved in the process at all. This was something that I identified and had staff work up. I really recognized that we did not have this curfew authority in June, but I chose to wait until now, December, to consider it based on the fact that we had many factors of items that were going on in the community, the environment, and really not, in my opinion, needing to make sure and have this available until the spring of 2021 as we look at what might be future natural weather events that would occur that would require us to, to have this curfew ability. My past experience in utilizing the curfew in 2008 in Mason City, we had a very large flood that occurred, and we needed to impose a curfew. We flooded in Sunday morning, and by 5:00 in the afternoon, I had the mayor signing the curfew ordinance to put it into place. And that night at, I believe, 9 o'clock, since it was summer, the curfew went into place. And we kept that curfew in place just for two days. We needed to allow, protect that, the property that was in that area and to ensure that the residents could feel comfortable that their neighborhood was going to be protected. And we did that by really just designating the areas of where the, you know, where the flooding occurred and making sure that people weren't out wandering through. They had a lot of interest to see, well, how bad was the flooding, what homes were flooded? And it was really just people out and about when we didn't need them to be as we were still dealing with many issues related to the flood. And so we found that to be effective in use. And so when I realized that we didn't have that available here based on our current code, that we needed to make a change. I've seen curfews used in other cities. I was involved in the 1993 flooding that occurred in Des Moines, where they instituted curfews there as well. And we saw from multiple occasions that due to civil unrest, there have been a number of cities that have decided to impose a curfew to limit the violent protests that occur from time to time in cities. So with all of that, you know, I have heard from other governing body members and citizens that believe that allowing one person to be able to make this decision to impose a curfew, whether it would be the mayor or the city manager for that matter, that that's really not appropriate, and I understand that. I'm fine with that. I simply was used to the mayor being the individual that could impose that based on past experience. And also, it really kind of rhymes with what is currently available for Shawnee County and that the Chair of the County Commission can actually impose a curfew for seven days, and then the full commission would have to vote in order to extend it beyond that. Most of the time, you don't see curfews extended beyond that period of time. I'm obviously open to considerations for changes to this ordinance if it would be. If it would be that the whole governing body would be the, the group necessary in order to be able to make that change. Um, I'm open to that. Um, for me, it's really about determining a, a policy to be able to enact a curfew um when we might need it. And honestly, I hope that if it was ever put into place and approved, um, that we would never need it. Um, because if we're needing a curfew, there's obviously bad things that are happening in our community um to where we would think about this. I'm open to obviously the discussion and also that if needed, we need to send this to a committee, just send it to policy and finance or whatever community you would determine is best. But um I felt that in my capacity, once I identified what I felt was a shortcoming, that I should bring something forward. And obviously, it's your uh decision-making that determines what this uh ordinance and how the policy would work. So with that, um, I'll, I'm open to answering questions.
Questions for city managers. See, Councilman Duncan?
Uh, legal question for you, I guess. Is it the posi-, I mean, can the city council today not convene a meeting, declare a state of emergency and enact a curfew under current law afforded to us by the state of Kansas?
I think that's what this is based on. You could convene a meeting within X amount of time, provided it's an emergency situation. If you need to call curfew, I would consider that to be an emergency situation.
Right, but my point is this, as a governing body tonight, if we wanted to enact a curfew, I mean, or call a meeting, do, do we have the authority to currently, without changing anything in our law, as this governing body enact a curfew?
I don't know the answer to that question in particular, Councilmember Duncan, so I have to look into that and determine whether or not we do. This is a home rule, so.
Okay, so, because my position would be, if that is the case, I'm not sure why this would be necessary if we already have the authority to do that, if we thought that we needed a curfew, if it was that. Or second of all, if we're not clear on that, I guess my recommendation would be, let's get an A G's opinion and then we can make a decision as a council. I mean, so that's my point. If we already have the authority to do this, I'm not sure why we're having the discussion. So that would be my question. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. Somewhat piggybacking on that because I think there's a lot of common sense component to what Spencer is talking about. I do not think that uh we should have any kind of ordinance that is created uh for this. If we, if something comes up, I would think that we would be able to call an emergency meeting. And if things are that dire in this city, I believe in all of my colleagues and that they would be able to make that meeting. And for whatever transparency would be needed, I believe that we could accommodate that as well. I do not, the story to me has changed. I mean, it came out in June, we just found out about it. I found out about it through the media. It was, the story started that, you know, mayor and then because of the protests that we had, which I, I, I beg to differ with you in comparison to other cities. What we experienced here, in my opinion, was a few outliers and really of, of, a really strong, some, I believe, too strong. Goes into, you know, flooding and, and I understand, you know, we want to be as well-rounded and prepared as we can. But as a governing body, I believe that every one of us, if the emergency was there, we would drop everything we were doing in a heartbeat and we would be there to cast any vote that we needed to. I, I do not like the feel of this ordinance. Uh, it, it, it just smacks to me of fear creating at a time when we do not need fear, any more fear than what we're living with already. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Lesser?
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I did have an intention um today to uh reach out to former Mayor Doug Wright just to, to, to visit with him about how uh when his father was the mayor in the sixty-six tornado that came through exactly, you know, what processes went through. Because I look at this from my perspective, I think the timing uh of it coming out led people to believe this was more of a COVID pandemic type situation when in fact, um, I think it's, it, it, it is something that we need to address from a standpoint of, of, of weather, whether it's something like the fifty-one flood, the sixty-six tornado, which do the math on those. Um, uh, as an insurance guide, if we haven't had a flood since fifty-one and a tornado since sixty-six, uh, I don't have to be an actuarial to understand that the odds are, are, are headed that way. Um, but hopefully not. But um, I wonder if um, or I do understand the fact of that we would all drop in what we're doing um and get to a meeting. I think we, I, I know we all would if that was possible. Um, if, if our family wasn't in danger, if, if the roads were passable, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so then that, that brings the question is, do we maybe, as Spencer said, um, look at an opinion of whether it's needed to have this ordinance? But then if, if it's not, then create some type of ordinance or rule that does give us the ability with technology that it does not have to be a, a physical in-person and app, meeting, um, no different than we've kind of had to do to uh, to do these Zoom meetings that are completely virtual. So maybe it just says in the event of an, of a, uh, an emergency, a curfew, you know, can't, i- if needs to be called, the meeting can be done um by, by, by teleconference, by uh Zoom, et cetera, et cetera. Um, that would be my only thought um of, you know, making sure that it wasn't something that we had to all physically uh be there present to do that, and that, that I don't know.
Lisa?
Yes, uh, Mayor and Councilmember Lesser, I was thinking that was the approach or the question that Councilmember Duncan was asking. I think that you, you touched on that, Mike, is to maybe include some kind of provision in there that would allow you the capability to get together, get together uh virtually if necessary in order to, to call a curfew. But, but right now, the city doesn't have the authority to or to impose a curfew other than implementing this ordinance.
I, I thought, though, you just said that you did not know, I thought, Lisa, I thought, what I, what I had heard was you did not know for a fact whether or not we would have authority to call emergency meeting to call a curfew. That's what, unless I heard you wrong.
No, the, the cover page that's with the ordinance states that we can't call a curfew right now. We have to rely on the county in some situations, whether, you know, it's a state of emergency or something like that. I guess my, my fear was, how are we going to do that if it's the entire governing body that's going to be, I guess, imposing the curfew rather than just one individual um and getting together virtually? Is one of the things I think perhaps the language should address.
Councilman Dobler?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I find it kind of hard to get my arms around a disaster that would not include a portion of the county at the very least. Um, and I think we're under, I mean, right now, the chairman of the county commission can establish a curfew for seven days. You know, tornado, flood, um, it, it seems to me that the mechanisms are in place and, you know, is, I think I'd be in favor of trusting uh the county to impose the, a curfew if that was necessary. Thank you.
Councilwoman Hiller, to be followed by Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, in, in considering this, I guess I, I backed up and I thought, well, wait a minute. Let's, let's figure out what the problem would be and whether we have solutions already to the problems. And I would suggest, I, I, I apparently maybe Mike didn't get hold of, of Doug or Doug didn't know what they did back at the time of the sixty-six tornado. But we've been through a number of tornadoes here and some flooding and, and civil unrest as well um in recent years even. And I don't know that we've ever even, that the governing body has ever even considered doing a curfew for those reasons. We have debated it for other reasons, like young people and should they be home at night? And there were all sorts of reasons that were discussed at that time that at least here in the city, people weren't comfortable with the idea of a curfew. Kids getting to work, people not being able to go out of their house, domestic violence, whatever it might be, that, that a, just a blanket curfew wasn't a good idea. Not sure that we even need government action. And when I look at it, you know, I've had houses that had crisis or demolitions or in poor shape. Right now, we, our police chief and fire chief and our code compliance people can shut down a house or a district right now and tell people that they can't come in. Um, when we listen to what's happened at, at the wildfires in, in California and so on, what happens is that if there's an area that's damaged, it gets cordoned off and, and earthquakes the same way. And they just, you have to have some credentials to go in, like it's your house or whatever, and, and they just manage it. I don't think there's a way to get around having to have law enforcement or someone stand guard if you have, if you're trying to protect a district because something happened. So I don't see a curfew solving that problem. And again, if, if the, if the police chief and the fire chief all have the ability to limit, I know when we've had houses that are placarded, code ha- and police have worked to tell people you can go in during the day but not at night and things like that. We're doing that all the time here right now. And, you know, in the case of anticipated civil unrest or, or whatever, um, we have the capacity now to close streets, to allow space for events or shut them down. The police have the ability to shut them down if there's been an accident or something bad has happened. Um, you know, even to where it has been a short and the traffic lights are out. I mean, we have those powers already without even having to have the governing body involved. And so I just really couldn't come up with a situation it really likely that we need to be involved. If we do, maybe we do, do need to look at the virtual, but I do remember talking about this before and, and if there was an emergency and maybe it was a certain part of town, um, you just have to have a quorum for us to meet. I mean, for the council to call a meeting, that city manager can call a meeting, the mayor can call a meeting, what is it, four people on the council? And the quorum, maybe just one over half of us, so the likelihood that we couldn't get a meeting together if we needed it, we concluded was very slim and, and that if the crisis was that terrible, we probably figured it out. So I, I just, I don't, it would be good to know whether the state law actually would allow us to do it. My inclination from this conversation right now is it'd be probably more likely that if the county called a countywide curfew, we would say we didn't want one and figure out how, how to stop it from inside the city boundaries. I, I just, I don't think we should advance this at this point unless there's something compelling. Thank you.
All right, well, yes.
I, I was gonna just, I mean, Brent probably knows a lot more about the emergency processes than just about anybody on the call. But um, you know, the way it works is, is there's an emergency and then the E O P goes into effect and the county commissioner can call a curfew. But I think what, what Brent was trying to get at was to try to not ask permission from anybody else to, to call a curfew if he thought he needed to do so within the city, so.
I guess my thought is that we would want to limit access to a place that was dangerous. If the utilities are out or it's flooded or power lines are shorting or something like that. We absolutely would want to protect pe- people and property, but we would be doing it by limiting access probably twenty-four hours a day to that particular site, however big that was, and that we have the power to do that now.
We had so, another council member that had raised their hand. Councilman Duncan?
Okay, I, I guess I'm confused. Back up for a second. I did ask what precluded us from calling a curfew under current law, and your first response was you didn't know. So just, I want to back up one more time. Is there a specific state law that, that says we have to pass an ordinance giving us the power to enact a curfew? Or are we interpreting that we need to do this versus our, do we not already have the authority today as a governing body to enact a curfew? And if not, why not?
There is no state law that allows us to impose a curfew. There's a state law that allows the county to do so. Once it calls an emergency, activates the E O P, then they can call a curfew. But we would have to implement a home rule ordinance for us to do that.
Okay, we can have a further.
And then the virtual piece is the thing I was worried about.
Right, I would just tell you, absence of, absence of it being on the books, I, I, okay. All right, I, I'm still confused about that. I think we might need some better clarification. Um, because I would contend we can do it, but, but thank you.
I interrupt, Mayor.
Yes, absolutely, because Councilwoman Ortiz has been waiting patiently.
I know, this will be quick. Back on June third, I asked Mary Feeney whether or not we could do this. And we do not have it on our books to be able to do so. So that was the attempt that I put this forward on, was that then we would be able to do so. And that's what was informed. And we could do, create that ordinance, just as Lisa was saying. Because we have home rule here, we can then create that ordinance that then gives those authority to whomever we would decide that would have the ability just to impose a curfew. But if we don't add this ordinance, then we do not have that ability. We can call a quick special meeting, but we would have to approve the very ordinance that I'm talking about now to then be able to do a curfew. And we would have to wait till that could become law. And so that's why we need, if we want this capability, it needs to be instituted by us ahead of the need. And that's, that's why it's been brought forward.
Councilwoman Ortiz? Deputy Mayor?
Okay, Councilwoman Ortiz was first.
She shook her head saying no.
Oh, okay. Okay, sorry, I didn't, um, you know, I, um, I'm really troubled by this and I, and I, and I, I don't think anyone has like bad motives here at all, but um, you know, I, I have two sophomore boys at home right now and they hate this, being locked up and I just, you know, right now, the, just the thought that government would establish any sort of more, and, and I know that's not the intent of this, but the timing, I think, can lead a lot of people to feel like that. And I would not be supportive of anything like this right now. As a matter of fact, I'd like to dispose of this tonight and not even take action on it next week, but, but we probably can't do that. But uh, I just think this is really, I mean, to me, this is really um a sad thing to ever ponder we would need this. Um, I just, I, I don't, frankly, I don't want government, any of us in government to have this power. Um, unless it's a dire emergency, unless all of us are in agreement. So um, I, I, I will not support this. Uh, I don't see supporting this in the, in the future. But um, that's, that's just my two cents worth. Thanks.
Councilman Padilla?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I, I just, I'll start first by the following a little bit on what Deputy Mayor said. I've asked several people about this. Um, and just quickly asked them, well, what they thought about the uh proposal of having uh the availability of an ordinance to impose a curfew. And the immediate response I got from almost everyone that I talked to was what I think Deputy Mayor is talking to. They related it to COVID. They, they gave no thought to uh other issues that might require restricted movement uh like from a disaster, a, a natural disaster. Their immediate response was, and it must be because of the times and the timing, their thought was that this is, this is COVID-related and we're just getting ready so that we can shut things down. And, and uh, that, that was the objection more than anything. Um, I don't believe at all that that was the intent by the city manager. And I sent a response, I don't know who all got it, I thought I replied to all. And I thought myself that, just coming from my background where I have worked in situations where we've had to restrict movement because of activity that was disruptive to the community. But we did it. And that's kind of where I would like to, if we were going to continue this, talk about what protocol could we put in place that one might set aside any fears that any one individual had this sole authority or that this authority was being created to, to address COVID specifically. Because we do have the communications ability, like Councilwoman Hiller's talked. The fire chief and the police chief have both instituted a communication circle where they can notify us almost immediately of a situation that requires our attention. So I think we're all pretty responsive to that, to that way to communicate. And I think I would feel more comfortable too with instituting a type of emergency protocol if we don't already have one in place. It may even mirror what it already is in place with the Shawnee County Emergency Management Office. But something that is just falls short of a curfew, but puts us all at the, at the ready and in a position that we could consider the situation at that time. And we could still, I think, address initial issues of safety and concern without that curfew that, again, right now, I just think that the public perception of it is focused so much on COVID that that's the only response I ever got. And I got that from law enforcement too. And that, that, oh, is this COVID related? Is this because of COVID? So that assumption is there and immediately that brings out a lot of opposition for some people who don't even still believe that COVID exists. So anything that even is slightly associated or assumed that has to do with COVID is not going to be received well. So that's my, that's my thought. I, I would not support a curfew ordinance at this point, but I would support some effort to look at a, a specific protocol that we as a governing body could follow to act in a quick time to any danger that we encounter here in the community, whether it's from a natural disaster or from civil unrest. We'll be able to do that, I think, without an ordinance. Just my two cents.
Councilwoman Nager. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just like to support that directive from Councilman Padilla. That what's really clear is that we are unclear on what we would do in any sort of situation and that this does extend past COVID. So I would like to go ahead and review any protocols that we already have in place with the county, with our emergency services. And in response to civil unrest, natural disasters, or God forbid, in a health scare situation, just so we do know as a community where we need to look to whenever, unfortunately, things do come to pass. I want us to be ready and to be confident that we know those next steps. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Well, we are at 9:55. Councilwoman Lesser, I see your hand. But if we want to continue completing this meeting, this still has, I think, one more item and two executive sessions. We are going to have to pause so that we can suspend the rules of a 10 o'clock meeting ending until we are done. And I see Councilwoman Ortiz raising her hand for a motion. I saw Deputy Mayor seconding that motion. At this point in time, begrudgingly, I will ask for a vote.
And Mayor, just to clarify, this is to extend the meeting to the end of the agenda?
Until we're done.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mayor Dala Isla.
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller.
Yes.
Valdivia Akala.
Yes.
Ortiz.
No.
Emerson.
Yes.
Padilla.
No.
Nager.
Yes.
Dobler.
No.
Duncan.
Yes.
And Lesser.
Yes.
All right, we have seven yes. Councilmembers Ortiz, Padilla, and Dobler, ready now the motion carries.
I just had a quick count, a question for actually for Councilman Padilla. 66 tornado, you were in Topeka, correct?
Yep.
Was it, did, was a curfew enacted after 66 tornado?
You know, quite honestly, I cannot remember because at that time, believe it or not, I was still a teenager. And I was at work at the post office. And when the tornado hit, I was just going into work. So we hunkered down there at the post office. When it went through, then I left work and tried to make it back home. But I couldn't make it home at that time. I lived over on the east side of Topeka and because that was damaged by the tornado. And officers were already in place restricting movement there. And you had to show ID to show that you were a resident of that area before you could even go in. And because it was not safe, there were a lot of electrical lines down. And even if you tried to drive or even walk through, it was really dangerous. So for me, at that time, I was more concerned about being able to get home and check on people and check on my, my mother and father. But I really don't remember if a COVID, I mean, excuse me, C, if a curfew had been imposed. I always believed it was the law enforcement agency who took on that role and, and set those barriers up to restrict movement.
Just curious. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ortiz. No? Okay. All right, so city manager, I think that you have your response here by consensus of what the desire of the governing body is. I think this item will be pulled from the agenda. And I'm sorry?
Mayor, it was not scheduled for a future agenda.
Okay, it was discussion. Okay, there we go. All right, so next discussion item.
Be is a discussion regarding organizational and Topeka municipal code changes related to the elimination of the Neighborhood Relations Department.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. One second, please. So the elimination of the Neighborhood Relations Department was done as a budget saving action in 2020. And the ordinance presented tonight codifies the elimination of that department and corresponding assignment of the various divisions to other departments. In summary, the Property Maintenance Division moves underneath the Police Department. The Housing Division was assigned under the Planning and Development Department. The Community Engagement Division is assigned to the Executive Department, which is basically the city manager. Community Engagement obviously eventually will be developed in more to an ombudsman role in our city structure. And that is the next step to assist citizens with city issues. The other divisions will continue really handling their normal responsibilities that they have and they had in the past. Housing has picked up some additional grant management responsibilities because of some of the CARES Act grant funding that we've received. There are other changes such as codifying the Executive Department, which we budgeted for normally, but it doesn't actually exist in, in the code. And then other cleanup changes. We also corrected the ordinances related to the mandatory retirement ages for fire department personnel and police department employees. And there are, you know, it's, it's a lot of changes, but a lot of it is really, as I stated, related to, to the elimination of the Neighborhood Relations Department and the corresponding changes that needed to occur. So I stand for any questions.
Questions for city manager. Councilwoman Valdivia Altala.
Thank you, Mayor. So what this, let me just go back here. I think I'm semi-comatose. So what we're looking at tonight, right now, is you're saying to codify, is that correct?
Correct. It will make those items that I have, of, I have the authority to do temporary changes to regarding the structure. But in, in the long run, it has to be codified. And so that's what's been developed here.
And codify means we're going to change the municipal code. And so this is just a non-action discussion item where you're looking for feedback. Is that correct?
Correct. And then it is on the agenda for next week to be authorized. We have been holding off on this amongst other things, but we do have a desire to try and complete this by the end of the year.
Yeah.
Changes were made over six months ago.
Yeah, I hear you. Thank you. I just think that the elimination of the Department of Neighborhood Relations is not something that I could ever support or would ever support. I think that, uh, especially for a district that has NIAs and is trying, even in this period of COVID, to rejuvenate and maybe increase NIAs because they are so vital that even though these different sections of DNR are being piecemealed out, I think that it, it lends to a lack of cohesion. I think that it is scaring a lot of NIAs and neighborhood people. I understand that Karen, you know, and, and some of her folks with different NIAs had been meeting outside of the CAC to try to get things moving, et cetera. The NIAs that I have in this district have not been participating that much. Everything feels loose and frayed and uncertain. And at this point in time, especially, I think what our neighborhoods need, especially our LMI neighborhoods, is for consistency, is for cohesion, is for collaboration, is for a department that they know that they can go to. And it was unfortunate to me that after Director Sasha, you know, left, that then, right after that, it was almost like a swoop to the knees of the department. And that, to me, is truly unfortunate. So, um, you know, I do appreciate the chance to give, you know, public output. And I would also encourage anyone, any citizens that do not believe, especially neighborhood people, that this is the right move to please email me or call or email city councilor, city manager. Because this is a blow to me, to LMI neighborhoods that we do not need at this time. So thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Nager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I think maybe the city manager had a response.
Just city manager.
Thank you. I actually believe that in the long run, that the NIAs are actually going to benefit because I have moved the staff that supports the NIA as far as their communications and their various thing directly underneath me. There's no longer a department director between them and me. And the communication, I believe, over the, over the next year or better, will improve from the standpoint of their own longer be some, there'll be less inner, less involvement in, in the way potentially that, that would potentially exist. I believe that that person being correct, directly a subordinate of mine will allow them to be able to access and get my attention related to issues much easier.
Can I, can I respond to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for that, Brent. You know, and I know that you may see it, you know, in that way. I think that those that work directly in the neighborhoods and on the ground with the people and the neighborhoods, for the most part, don't agree with that. But thank you.
Councilwoman Nager.
Thank you. I'm, so city manager, there actions with this proposed change and and codification of these changes. It's just reassignment of current neighborhood relation development roles to different departments that also, as you have seen, seem to fit with those roles. Correct?
That is correct. I looked at the various functions that the divisions of, of that department did and determined based on discussions with a number of individuals where would their opinion best fit and my analysis. And so then assigned those divisions under those departments in order to assist with the cost savings that we incurred taking that department away.
Okay. Thank you, and thank you, Madam Mayor.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I guess, Mr. Trout, I had, I had a few questions on this because it, you know, the, the way our thing talks about is mainly to, to get the disposition of the neighborhood relations. But then there's a lot of other things this does. I know a lot of it's cleanup, but are all the, are all the things, are all the strikeouts in here, are those, are, are those, I guess, striking out the current language? Or are these changes that are already been made? For instance, we're just not creating a fire chief. Is that, is that correct?
Lisa, can you help on that? The additional changes that we have.
And the fire, so a fire chief is created, Councilmember Emerson, that's in 2.20. There's a fire department created and a fire chief. Are you talking about 2.30, chapter 2.30?
Yeah, yeah, 2.20, 0.030. And I guess, I, I guess my question is I, and I guess that's our job to go through all this, but just seems like there's a lot of stuff in here. And I, for instance, do we still have a city treasurer?
We do, actually. It's, it's not designated as that title, but it, I think it's technically, Jessica's on here. She can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's basically the accounting position.
Yeah, the treasurer function comes out of finance department from a day-to-day basis. Simon functions in that capacity, but ultimately, I believe I'm responsible for it.
And there's certain, I'm sorry, Mayor, if that's okay, I can jump in here. There's certain positions that are required to be outlined in the code. And that's one of those strange positions that, that's required to be outlined in the code. That one, along with city engineer, you have to reference that in the code for some reason. And they're tied to charter provisions. It's a little bit odd.
Thank, thank you, Mrs. Robertson, for that. I guess, I guess my only concern is that there's a lot of stuff in here to unpack. And again, I mean, yeah, I mean, I guess we could all make time and go through all this stuff. But is there some urgency to getting this done? Or is it just something nice you'd like to have it done before the end of the year? Is there, is there a reason it has to be done? For instance, one of the things in here is the zoo director. And that might be changing here in a month or so. We could just eliminate that if we waited a little bit. But, you know, provided things with thoughts work out, is that, is there a certain need to have this done right now?
Brent, not necessarily from my perspective, but.
Yeah, I think it, the, the bottom line, as you look at it, is one of my first quarter goals that was established by the governing body and we've been working on it for a while. So the idea was to bring it forward. I don't think anything, nothing changes in the day-to-day operations if we wait. If you would like this to be moved to January, we can do so. We just had targeted potentially doing this by the end of the year. Just as was basically directed from my evaluation that we get this going, and codify this and make it clear as to who does what within regards to the changes to the Neighborhood Relations Department.
Okay, I guess I don't have a strong opinion on that. I just, there's just a lot to unpack in here. And I guess, I just hate to, hate to rush something through and then, then we figure out. But one, we'd have to revisit this in a couple of months anyway because of the zoo transition probably, but I, I don't know. I guess, obviously.
We can move it. We have a lot of things on the agenda next week as well. And we'll move it to further. We'll look at the January calendar and move it to a meeting in January in order to allow additional time for you to be able to review it.
That, that would be great. Like I said, I'm, I'm only one of 10, so.
No, but I think reasonable request. It is a lot, and we've been doing a number of other things. And so I'm perfectly fine with moving it to allow some space in, in the schedule.
Okay, that, thank you. If no one else objects, that'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to follow up a little bit on what Councilwoman Christina Valdivia spoke to. And ask the City Manager, during your, this process of presenting this and creating this, how much input has been received by you from the NIAs or the Citizens Advisory Council or any of those grassroots organizations as you've moved forward in, in making this preparation? Have you been able to get active input from those groups?
Well, I think when the decisions were made related to where the, each of these departments go, there was not. Obviously, that received some input from others as the decisions have been laid out and people have moved in the, you know, in the interim timeframe. Overall, I, it hasn't, I haven't received that much that says this is difficult. The divisions are still doing what they were charged to do. And the division's mission hasn't changed just because they're under another department. And so I, I don't see that there would be a change because their mission has not changed. Their roles and responsibilities in our city government have not changed as to what they do on a day-to-day basis. And so I really have not received any concerns. There have been other things that have been brought forward through Karen's Neighborhood Initiative, and those are way beyond just the day-to-day operations of the department.
Okay, well, thank you. I, I just, as, as a matter of a suggestion, for those of us councilmembers who have NIAs, I would like to visit with you a little bit more about that one-on-one. And, and others may want to as well, but you know, change is always difficult for people. And too often, it becomes even more difficult when assumptions are made about what will happen if these changes take place. And the best way, in my opinion, to ally that is to sit face-to-face with some of these people who have those concerns and explain to them what the intent is. The one thing that I like about what you're saying, and it's something that I've encouraged the City Manager's office to do, either you personally or someone who works in your office with you. And that is to be more connected and cut down the links between the needs of the NIAs and the City Manager and Neighborhood Relations. There just seemed to be too many links that people had to climb up the chain to get to, get to you. And I think reducing that would make it more effective as an office. If, like you said, the direct reports are right there under you, you would be much more accessible, if that's the intent. And that would help, I think, a lot of people who have some concerns and worries about what they might lose as opposed to what they might gain in a closer relationship with your office. And so between now and when we may reconsider that again, that's something that I would like to see happen. So, and, and I know you're not opposed to going out and meeting people because you're at meetings all over the place. But I think when something like this comes up, that's really, really at the base of trying to gain the support, not just from us, but from the people that be, will be affected by those changes that you're proposing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just say, just so any District 2 people watching at almost 10:30, is that I do not have my regular monthly meetings with the City Manager going face-to-face. However, I would be willing to have much-needed conversation about this because I found out, I think like everybody else did through the, an email, that there was a consideration for the movement of, or for the demolition of the department. I believe that I did not act in due diligence with coming forth as forcefully as I needed to until after the fact. And then after talking with NIAs and with individual neighbors that are not happy. So I would encourage conversation as well. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I think there's kind of two tracks going here. One is that there is concern. I, I, I think I told you all at the beginning of the meeting, people that were on, that I'd just gotten word that was kind of buzzing around the NIAs, that this was going to get rid of the NIAs. And, and we may want to check in here carefully at least to make sure that it's clear where they fit. And, and I, I think the two tracks are that this, the track that you've given us is, is, I don't say this in a bad way, but it's kind of bureaucratic. It, 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 it names the top people and it, it names some details about their departments, but the internal functioning is not addressed. And at least for the neighborhood relations pieces, some more clarity, I, I think is truthfully what the council was looking for in your, in the request from you personally, but also, you know, if it doesn't belong here, I think people want it. And an example would be with the, with the community engagement people being under you, but the consolidated plan and other plans being over in planning, housing and planning, it's sort of like who's in charge of calling the meeting? Who's in charge of engaging neighborhoods in doing this plan or, or others that would come along? And I'm not sure that that's clear yet. Again, it, and it might not have to be perfectly clear in this TMC document, but I think everybody does want it to be clear. There, you know, with my Neighborhood Initiatives group there, they've kind of run with that because it started after this breakup of the department had already occurred. And so looking at, at accessing other departments, not just neighborhood relations, I think is a plus to the whole thing. If they do get given that authority and they really are assigned to work with the neighborhoods, not to be going out and, and doing ombudsman work or doing food drives or things like that that are not tied to the neighborhood. And so we don't have the assurance yet of the, the level of skill and the, and the amount of time that's going to be committed to the neighborhoods themselves. Again, this plan won't, won't, won't get that detailed, but I think people are eager to have it. More specifically about this document, yeah, it is pretty long. And it's probably worth all of us reading through. I sent, I've been through it once, and I sent the City Manager an email, so I don't know that I need to report that, but caught some technicals that were just kind of confusing that I thought could be cleaned up. Also, for instance, updating the mission in a similar way to what we did this evening in the con plan, I, I think would, would sync them up. But one big question I asked was that, for the most part, there was housekeeping done in cleaning out a lot of detail that staff apparently felt was not necessary to be in the TMC in other departments. But for some reason, there's a, there's, there's a ton of stuff still there about the, what's, what's related to CDBG and the neighborhood. And I don't know if that, if HUD requires that we have it in the TMC, then maybe we have to do it. Otherwise, there's a lot in there that, you know, about purchasing and about conflicts of interest and so on, that isn't in there about other departments. And even the one, which I did note, the one on conflict of interest is very broad, and it's very prohibitive about, for instance, low-income neighborhood people being able to participate in programs if they're on the CAC or on any sort of board. HUD's regulations allow, or elected officials for that matter, HUD's regulations allow publishing and waivers for that, but this TMC would be in conflict with that. So I think there's, it's just worth looking through all those things and A, thinking about whether they need to be here, and B, if they are, why, and, and make sure they're synced up. And the, the other, the, the other big thing I saw was in, it's about the fire chief, and I don't know what the, the section is, but the law, it's lines 548 to 553. And the staff is suggesting it be deleted. But what it does is describes the broad powers of the fire chief, which includes, for instance, declaring emergencies and shutting down sites, which we happened to be talking about just a little bit earlier. It basically gives the chief broad authority to tell people what to do and to, to control a site. And if it's already in the code someplace else, okay, but if it's not, I think we need to leave that section in. So, a little, you had indicated City Manager in your email or whatever it was earlier today that you were eager to have input and then go, go in and have staff do some editing. Right? So if people just submit comments to you, they could expect that they would be, be reviewed and addressed?
Yeah, we would look at them and just as we do with any code or modification that we're considering.
Well, a little extra time will help on that too, then. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. At this point, we just have one person signed up for public comment, and Mr. Schiffelbein has been patiently waiting. Mr. Schiffelbein. Mr. Schiff, oh, there you go.
All right. Again, well, thank you for, I, I don't intend to try to delay your deliberations. You spent a long evening. I applaud you for your endurance. I just want to make the point that the increasing the availability of safe and affordable housing is economic development. At a minimal investment of city revenue, along with private investment in the Housing Trust Fund, we can realize an increase in city revenues from an improved tax base. We could show, um, okay. The implementation plan demonstrates the collaborative effort of the community, city staff, nonprofit and private sector organizations and individuals. Your approval tonight improves our community efforts to improve the availability of safe and affordable housing. We are grateful that you already have improved the plan, and we're grateful to see that you're ready to jump on board. Thank you.
Thank you so much. We're supposed to have announcements at this point in time in the evening. It's, if, if we could at least have the, the, the city clerk.
As December 15th agenda, we have two presentations. We will recognize city of Topeka retirees, and there will be an update on the Polk Quincy Vada project. Action items include the ordinance for the 2021 Topeka Tourism Business Improvement District fee structure. We will have an ordinance for the American Medical Response Franchise Agreement. We pulled the DNR ordinance. We have a resolution for the 2021 Gervini Madi meeting schedule. An ordinance for nondiscrimination. And then the non-action items includes discussion on the 2015 International Existing Building Code and discussion on zoo documents.
Next person for City Manager.
Finally, my announcements relate to, we have the announcement that went out regarding Operation Hand Sinister Operation Hand Sinetizer pop-up event tomorrow from 9:00 to 12:00 at the Stormont Vale Events Center parking lot. So for those individuals that may be interested. And then it also went out that there, from the Shawnee County COVID-19 Response Team, that there are new, three new sites related to testing that can occur for COVID-19. The new Mount Zion Baptist Church, Speaker Housing Authority, and then Hummer Sports Park. So more detail, if you have questions, on Shawnee County's website to be able to find out, you know, get the exact address. Those are going to be open 9:00 to 5:30 each day.
Deputy Mayor. Valdivia. Dobler. Duncan. Lesser. Hiller. Valdivia Alcala.
Sorry, guys. I just wanted to inform people, on December 17th at 6:00 PM, the Fire Committee meeting. Folks in District 2, I encourage you to watch. Actually, all Topequins should be on Channel 4 or live stream on Facebook. I have deep, deep concerns about what's happening at Station 1 located at 934 Northeast Kansas. Since January, my unofficial count has been, at least it's been shut down 100 times. And I have concern for public health and safety. I have concerns for the older homes in the area, the business areas such as no-tow businesses, Habitat for Humanity, and those businesses that stretch further north on North Kansas Avenue. I'm working right now on outreach schedule to get out, talk to the folks and businesses. I also just heard from today information that I've been waiting from Chief Duke that I should get that in the next week. So folks, tune in. Thank you, Mayor.
Ortiz.
Thank you. I'm sorry, colleagues, but I have to say this. Southeast Carnahan Avenue and I-70 interchange is now open. And I'm surprised Deputy Mayor didn't say anything because I went to one of the meetings to request that we kind of cut some of that pork chop, whatever it's called off. And constituents in District 3 are just proud that it's open. It looks great. It looks wonderful. And we've been waiting a long, 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 long time for this. So we are excited about that. And since the Deputy Mayor didn't say anything, I will say something. 29th Street looks fabulous, fabulous. I can now whip into Dollar General without going all the way around, coming back all the way around. I cannot believe he has not said one word about it because everybody is just loving it. So 29th and Croco, all the way down to 29th and, I don't know, he'll have to come back and tell me, but going, going back west is wonderful. So your tax dollars at work, and I tell you what, we're ecstatic about it. I'll be, I will be more ecstatic when we get 6th and Golden. Once that's done, I will do a backflip. I, I haven't done that in a while, but anyway, thank you, Madam Mayor.
At this point in time, I wanted to let you know that City Manager and I are proposing that we skip the executive session and we move the executive session to next week. The, the best way to describe, you know, working at 10:30 at night, after all of us have been working since early in the morning, is like making decisions in pairs because our brains are tired. So if everybody is amicable with that, just kind of nod your head. And if, yes, there's a lot of thumbs up, look at that, even at 10:30 at night. So that being said, there is no executive session. This meeting is officially adjourned. You guys are heroes. Thanks so much. Have a great evening.
Good night, Tony.